This conference will now be recorded.
I'll be right with you.
Hello.
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 We hear you on.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, okay, I was having some problems hooking up with my laptop, so I apologize about that.
Am I on here as well? This is Douglas Dunn.
You're on Doug.
You are Doug.
Are we ready to go?
Looks like Michael is muted.
Want me to mute myself?
No, the other Mike. No, the other Mike.
Are we ready to go?
Yes, we are.
Okay, this is Douglas Dunn, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I call the meeting of February 25th, 2021, 5:30 PM. Call to order. I'll make the roll call. John Ballas. Ballas. John here. Joe. Douglas Dunn present. Sandy Housman.
Here.
Here. Nancy Pirana.
Here.
Jennifer Ginger Ryan.
Here.
Michael Smithner. Here. And Mike. Let's see. Ablyn. Mike.
He's here, he's just on mute. Mike, you have to unmute your...
How's that? Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Louis Pollak is counsel liaison, is he on? Joe Ward. Staff.
Yep.
Is there anyone else online? Agenda item number one is introduction of our new member, Mike. Ablyn. Welcome, Mike.
Hello, everyone, how are you? Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
If we have time, at the end of this meeting, we may go around and do some introductions.
Excellent.
Did somebody just arrive?
Yes, this is John Bayless. Having trouble with my laptop, so I'm on my phone.
Okay, John. And leave the Johns present. Agenda item number two, public hearing on a proposed amendment to the zoning code. Possible recommendation of the mayor and council. Consideration of a proposal amendment, proposed amendment to the zoning code to establish Article NE, which is recreational marijuana establishments and testing facilities. Staff, would you want to give us Joe? Would you want to give us a report on this?
Going to be limited, Doug. But the, um, everybody knows that the recreational marijuana passed the last election, and so the city of Bisbee is trying to... We've been inundated with calls about people, for people who are wanting recreational marijuana facilities. I mean, there's a lot of calls, of course, there's not that many, at this point, there's not that many licenses to be had. But the, um, we have to get something in place to make it, to make it acceptable, because we don't have anything in place, therefore, it makes it, it makes it unpermitted, it's an unpermitted use at this point. So, um, we're trying to get ahead of this and, and get some rules in place that will, keep everything at a reasonable level. And be able to meet the legalities of this. And this was, this has been proposed. What we have before us is proposed by the city attorney.
Okay, and attorney is not with us this evening, right?
He is not.
Okay, that makes it kind of difficult.
Yeah, we pay him by the hour.
We now declare a public hearing open and to receive public comment. Is there anyone online who wishes to make public comment on the proposed ordinance? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. I call now for discussion.
I have a question as a new member. So, is it my understanding that because it's not specifically included in the ordinance, that it's assumed that it's specifically excluded? Is that correct?
If recreational marijuana is not specifically dealt with, then it, in our zoning code, then it is specifically prohibited, yes. That's what I asked you, Mike.
So, the purpose, the purpose of this notice is to adopt the ordinance to potentially allow for it in the future, is that correct? Subject to a lot of other stipulations.
Yeah. Well, the, this, this would, what you're working on here is, is, um, what would, what would allow it, but it would, you're going to make a recommendation, mayor and city council, as to how they will vote.
I see. But the, the premise is that if we don't approve it, if we don't allow it, then it would, it would stop right there, is that correct?
No, it would go before city council with, with your recommendation, that it'd be declined.
I see, okay. All right, I just wanted clarity, because I didn't really understand. Okay.
Other commission members, comments?
I have... Doug, this is Ginger. I have a couple of questions. What exactly is a testing facility?
There is a, um... I guess we don't have a definition of testing facility.
No. What do they do?
In, in Section K? No, no. I, Section, I, M. Recreational marijuana testing facility. It's the department or other entity licensed by the department to analyze the potency of marijuana and test marijuana for harmful contaminants.
Where was that, Sandy?
That is in 10B2, uh, letter M.
Page three.
Page three.
Okay, my apologies, I looked for it and I didn't see it. Um, the other thing that appears to be, and I read all this, is why are the regulations different for marijuana than they are for alcohol?
Who knows?
Ginger, Ginger, what was your question? I'm sorry.
Why are the regulations different for marijuana than they are for alcohol?
Marijuana is still considered a Schedule I, so it's as bad, well, according to the government, it's as bad as like heroin and other things. It's still, it's still, um, considered really bad by the government.
Well, it's mis, yeah, mis-categorized as a Schedule I. But, I don't know, it seems to me that it would stop a lot of things if the regulations were.
My understanding is that too, Ginger, that there's, there's a lot of odor that comes off of these establishments, like with the testing, or the growing even, they say there's a, there's a tremendous amount of, of odor that comes off of it, and, um, that's one of the things that limits it.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. I'm also surprised there's public here. I sort of assumed that there would be, um, public involvement.
It would be nice.
Joe. Uh, 10B, that mirrors 10A, does it not?
Say that again, Mike.
Uh, this new regulation, 10B, basically mirrors 10A, which is the pharmaceutical marijuana.
Yeah.
Uh, my question is, where, where is 10A allowed to be at?
Well, let me open up the zoning code, and you want to know where the medical marijuana is allowed to be at?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have a chance to pull down 10A and read it.
Yeah.
It's the same as in here.
But it refers to 10A as where it can be at.
It's C1, 2, 3, 4, and M1, it's the same.
Yeah.
What is that? I did not read 10A.
Yeah, but it's, it's, the locations are exactly the same as what you have proposed for the recreational marijuana.
Okay. I mean, this is a retail establishment, it still does not allow to have a marijuana bar, or to smoke marijuana, consume marijuana in public.
That's correct.
It's strictly a sales location.
It is. Now, did you guys get that, that email today regarding whether or not, since we're talking about the locations for these recreational marijuana dispensaries, whether or not we were wanting the C, the, the CM zoning to be included in that? Which would be up in the, like, the entertainment district area of Bisbee? Did you get the maps?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, um, whether or not that would be appropriate? Would you guys, um, have you considered? Would you be considering that, that's appropriate or not?
I would consider it to be appropriate, so law doesn't encroach on churches, public schools, and a lot of other areas as deemed by the code. I understand, though, the entertainment district, though, does have some exceptions to that.
This, this wouldn't be part of the entertainment district, per se, either, but I'm telling you that that would be the, the basic lines of it, there where that, where the, um, the CM zoning is.
So, Joe, all the CM is entertainment district?
Well, the entertainment district pretty much follows Tombstone Canyon up and through, and I think it includes up, um, the, the mouth of, the mouth of, the, um, of the gulch. But it runs all the way up to the courthouse area.
So, it goes down the gulch, and then it goes up towards the courthouse?
Yeah. But not the entire gulch by any means, just up to, as far as the park, I believe.
But pharmaceutical stores are not allowed in that area, correct?
They're not currently allowed, correct?
So, you mean drugstores?
So, pharmaceutical marijuana stores are not allowed in the entertainment district at this time?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, at this time, it's limited to the C designations and the M1.
So, Joe, for clarity purposes, there is currently a marijuana store next to the Safeway on the other side of the pit. What is that? Yeah, what, what is the classification of that store? That might be helpful for everyone, so at least we understand what we're looking at. What, what is the classification of that particular store?
The, right now, that store sell, that store is able to have medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, the state kind of unilaterally gave everybody licenses to, um...
Under, okay.
To distribute and to grow and all that kind of, they, that's pretty broad, I believe.
Gotcha, okay.
But that's, area is zone straight commercial, or, or straight C, correct?
I will have to look what that, I believe it's probably C2, but let me, I got my computer right here.
Thank you.
Do they grow at that store?
They do not.
No.
They, it's just retail. It's a very popular place these days.
Absolutely.
They are.
The growhouses do put off a lot of odor. One of my vendors in Phoenix is very close to a grow yard. Actually, indoor facility, and you can smell the marijuana from, uh, you know, two or three blocks away.
Really?
In answer, in answer to the question, is the, um, the Green Pharmacy is Zone C1?
Would the Green Pharmacy have to get a special use permit and able to sell recreational marijuana?
Nope, the state already issued them a license. But they had to get a special use permit for their, um, for their medical marijuana.
You said they would?
When they originally did it, they obtained one, yes.
Yes, but now that, you said that they're now selling recreational marijuana, do they, would they have to come before, with this ordinance, would they have to come forward and get a, an additional special use permit and able to do recreational marijuana?
I'm not sure about that, Doug. Um, I think it'd be the right thing if they had to. But they currently have a license that was issued by the state.
Other comments?
So, what would...
Oh, yeah, I have a couple. This is Sandy, Doug. Um, I've read through this a few times, I've read through the medical, and I guess my first question is, um, other entities have just combined the two, why didn't we? Joe?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that for me, Sandy?
It reads the same as the medical marijuana regulation, with the exception of the very last section. Um, why, wouldn't it have been easier, wouldn't it be easier to just combine the two? Or no?
I'm not an attorney.
Okay, well, I had a lot of questions, but I think I've answered most of them, uh, with a couple of exceptions. We don't address location at all, as far as, um, location, you know, as far as, uh, school, facilities, daycares, churches, and things like that. Is that all somehow covered by the... I don't think it is.
That would all be subject... Go ahead, Joe.
I'm sorry. I don't think, I don't think that that, because this was passed by, um, by the voters, I don't think there is the, the distances, like they do with bars and that, from, from, um, I think there's something on, on school, it seems like, but there's nothing regarding churches. But I'm not an expert on this at all.
There wasn't anything in here on schools. So, my first question, the other one has to do with, let's see, if you go to, uh, 10B3, and it's referenced in A and B, um, kind of in the middle where it says, "Any recreational marijuana establishment or component, um, only be authorized upon approval of a special use permit, uh, within one of the designated districts, subject to the terms and conditions as the mayor and council may impose on such use." Is that something other than what's in the code? Or, yeah, or, I mean, what would that look like? What would that be? Where the mayor and council could impose other conditions?
Because, because it's a special use permit, it is, it is wide open, and the, the amount of, the conditions that they could put on there could be, um, almost anything that they deemed as being, um, appropriate for the special use permit in any one circumstance, because there's so many different locations that, um, the special circumstances would change.
Okay.
So, isn't, Joe, by default, that is the purpose of classifying it as a special use permit, that mayor and council does ultimately reserve the right above and beyond what the ordinance already says to still weigh in? So, I think...
Very important point.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is that, the, the, the point at hand right now is that currently, the city of Bisbee does not have this ordinance, of which a subset of this ordinance is the requirements of a special use permit. So, if we were to approve this ordinance and add it to the city or the bylaws of the city of Bisbee, it's still going to be predicated as by how it's written, a special use permit will still be need, will still need to be adhered to ultimately by mayor and council. Didn't mean to get too legalese on you, but...
A special use permit can be, can be canceled at any time for breaking the, um, the conditions of the special use permit and such, so it, it's revocable, and it, um, it's also can be, um, very finely defined for, like I said, for a specific location. This, this is rather broad, because it can be broad, because it's only going to be special use permits, is the only way that these people, that people are going to be able to, to have a recreational marijuana facility.
So, so Sandy, there's a, there's, if I could add to that, Joe, and to the rest, there's a tremendous amount of latitude both ways with a special use permit. So, the first step being, of course, is we would have to either accept this ordinance or deny this ordinance. I would make a motion that we accept it, so long as we all are understanding of what the special use conditions are, and then leave that up to mayor and council. I don't know if I followed Robert's Rules of Orders in that note, but that's, I'm, I'm new, so don't shoot me just yet.
Well, I have...
You're fine.
I only have one more comment on it, because I think it's pretty standard, I think it follows the state, I think it follows a lot of city, um, uh, a lot of cities that have already put this in place or are looking at it, so it's pretty standard. But, um, I, I kind of agree with Ginger to the fact that I think marijuana should be regulated just like alcohol. But, as long as it's, uh, still not legal, uh, in the federal realm, I would suggest we stick with the same, uh, zoning codes as the medical facility.
So, Sandy, just for some clarification, there are federal guidelines with regards to medical marijuana, uh, facilities. I think at a higher, I think at a higher level, and I don't know if this is, this is the right forum, but I'll just throw it out there, I think one of the concerns for the town of Bisbee should be, we, we don't want to have this as some gathering place for a bunch of high school kids to come in and just be able to go and buy marijuana at any store up and down Tombstone Canyon Way. And, and that will be mandated by the special use permit, and then ultimately enforced by the local, uh, the police and whatnot. Because that's a common, I've been involved with a lot of these up in Tucson, and that's always a major concern with these medical marijuana, whether they're for pharmaceutical or now recreational, is that, you know, are we going to turn this into a candy store for kids? And they're, they're, they're regulated very tightly, that I can tell you. I just thought I'd throw that in there.
I know that the feds regulate it tightly, and I know that, um, I, even in the state code, there are a lot of things that are not in our state section. But I still, I still feel that, you know, I, I still feel that we should keep up with the...
Um, it's... Yeah, Doug. This is Ginger. It's my understanding that the revenue generated by this will go to support community college, is that correct?
A portion of it does, yes.
Where does the rest of it go?
That was in the original legislation, I don't remember, but the largest part goes to community colleges.
So, the benefit to the city of Bisbee is the sales cap?
Yes.
Okay, well, there's some very happy people in Colorado as a result of, uh, the scallop.
Uh, Joe, I have a question, do we have, um, I know this is all preliminary, but do we have a dollar figure as to what the city of Bisbee would actually bring in, in tax revenue?
It'd be speculative if we did, but we don't have a, we don't have one in front of us, no.
What does the Green Pharmacy bring in, or is that, even, is that number even available? What, what are we collecting?
It's not available to me.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd like to go back to the, um, the, um, 10B.3A regarding the, um, the zoning districts. Was, um, was, was the commission interested in, or were they, would be interested in recommending that CM1 and 2 be added to these or not?
I would say yes. I wouldn't see any reason to preclude it. Again, it's all going to be subject to the special use permit, so to preclude it would be premature at this point. Let's see what happens and what develops, and then leave it up to the, the terms of the special use permit to bring a final decision.
Um, my opinion on it, CM1 and CM2 is the entertainment district.
Well, it kind of, it's kind of the entertainment district area.
Yeah, and, and in my opinion, um, I think this needs to be put in, in, in a location like the pharmaceutical, or the drugs, or the liquor stores and that nature, and, uh, CM1 and CM2 should be excluded at this point in time. I am in favor of going through, uh, C1 through C4 and M1. Um, but I'm not in favor of CM1, M2, or basically the entertainment district.
I would agree, I would agree with Michael.
And that was my feeling too. Keep it, keep it the same as the medical marijuana districts.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
The reason why I'm asking you, because there was queries regarding, um, Tombstone Canyon loca, or Main Street locations, and, um, I was asked to, to include that with, in the discussion. Thank you.
I noticed that there are two individuals, Joseph Lewis and Bailey, who are on the line. Do they have any comments?
They are both appearing to be muted.
Well, no, I have no...
I couldn't figure out how to turn my mic on. This is Joseph Lewis, how are you? Thank you for all that you do, um, Bisbee. I just wanted to speak really quickly in support of allowing the use in downtown, um, the, I, I just, I, I think that this, you know, this is legal in the state of Arizona now, and I know it takes a lot to get used to that, but Bisbee is a... I know it takes a lot to get used to that, but Bisbee is a tourist town and this has the opportunity, in my opinion, to really raise the bar as far as tax revenue goes. I mean, just see what's happening in Colorado. And I just, I think we'd be neglectful to think that we can only put this type of use in Warren and elsewhere and expect to raise the same number of tax dollars that we might if the use has been in the old town. So that's my two cents for what it's worth, and thank you for letting me speak.
Anyone else?
I like the idea of C1. As I look at the map, that seems to be the locales that that should go.
I just wanted to chime in again, talking about tax revenue. The portion of tax revenue we get from sales tax is very minute. You know, somebody like Safeway has a huge dollar volume and produces a lot of tax revenue, but most of the stores up and down Main Street do not bring that much revenue, net dollars, to the, to the town because I think only one and a quarter percent of the sales tax comes back to the city. Is that right, Joe?
Something like that. Well, we, plus, plus there's the, the streets and infrastructure tax, which is a penny, too.
Yeah. So we have about two and a quarter percent of the sales actually comes back to the city. Most of this revenue is going to go to Cochise College, which is in Saravesta. We don't have, we don't have a community college in Bisbee. You can also, at a later time, if there's a great support for being in the entertainment district, you can always add that into the code in a later date. It's going to be tough to pull it out if it's already in the code.
Any further comments?
You know, I'm going to disagree a little bit. I, Doug, it's Ginger, and I'm disagreeing. I think it would be okay to have it in the entertainment district. You know, the Bisbee Royale is going to be reopened and I think from a tourist perspective that it would be a good thing. The downside would be parking and congestion. I mean, with the Green Pharmacy, people were parking clear day out on Loco Highway, and in Old Bisbee, that would be... But I don't think the sale of marijuana there is a problem anymore than alcohol.
Yes, one point of clarification is that if it's sold there, it cannot be actually used there. There's a prohibition about using, smoking marijuana in public spaces, which would be just about everywhere.
Yeah. Ginger, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the Royale would be considered in C2. I'm looking, I'm looking at the map. Joe, can you verify that the Royale, for example, is in C2? I see it as the pink bright area. Is that correct? You're on mute. You're on mute, Joe.
Well, I didn't imply the Royale would actually be called a retail base, it's just that there's going to be that's there. So, I don't attract tourists. I didn't mean that they would actually sell from the Royale.
I'll make one more point as far as being in the entertainment district. This product cannot be used in the entertainment district anywhere. I think it's going to be a huge burden on the police department if there is a number of establishments in the entertainment district in patrolling and stopping that from happening. Specifically, the Gulch right now has a, has a huge problem, has had a problem for a number of years with the use of marijuana in public. And it has become a, it was very difficult for the police department to control or police. When you go ahead and have establishments right there in the entertainment district, I think that is going to increase significantly. It will be a huge burden on the police. The city council should ask Captain Atabé or what he thinks about it before making this decision also. I'm sure, I'm sure he'll put his comment in the city council meeting.
Joe, here we go. Joe?
I can, I can verify that it is, that the Royale is a CM2.
Well, and I'll put in my... Again, that I like the idea of staying with the same zoning as the medical marijuana. I think if we allow CM categories because of the tourists, the tourist industry, I agree with Michael, we are really opening up a can of worms in enforcement of rules because rules say no smoking in public, in city land, open space, parks. The other issue was the traffic. I think that we know the traffic out by Safeway, and I don't think there's room for any traffic for that establishment. So I would...
So I'm, I have a question.
With the original categories.
Mike?
So a question is that, I just want to make sure I understand, is that, is the concern that if, if a facility was to be placed in the entertainment district, that that would exacerbate the problem of smoking in public? I'm just throwing that out to Mike and Sandy. Is that, is that what you, what you're thinking? If there's a retail establishment in the entertainment district, that the likelihood of people going in there and then buying it and then walking outside and lighting up is, is greater than if there was a facility that was say over by the Safeway?
Could I chime in there for a second? So Mike, I used to live up on Tembi, which basically faced Brewery Gulch, and sound, sound bounces up Brewery Avenue. Not only sound, but actually just plain cigarette smoke bounces up there, too. And that's one of the reasons that I actually moved, you know, because it was until three or four o'clock in the morning. And it wasn't just music, but it was also smoke. So on Main Street or in the commercial district, you know, the C2 area, there's not really anything behind, there's the highway behind there, but then there's a little patch of houses, just say on Subway. But as you go up the Gulch, it's basically all residential on both sides. It goes the whole way up to OK Street and then the whole way up to Opera, you know, yada, yada. So that's, I mean, you know, I'm all for recreational and medicinal marijuana. But going back to the, the statement about tourism, it's, it's true that we're a tourist town, but it's also true that, you know, if we look at the statistics as the average age of tourism, you know, it's probably not as high as we'd like it to be for the age that is most likely go, going to indulge in recreational cannabis. So, I mean, if you go up and down Main Street on any given day, the average tourist, and I'm 57, so I'm not judging anyone, but I'm saying it's not in the 30s. It's definitely, you know, a little higher than 30. So again, even though I am in favor of medicinal and recreational cannabis, we have to take into account, we're going to also change the dynamics of the tourism, and that could be good, that could be bad, I don't know, but it's definitely, Grandma and Grandpa are probably not going to like the smell cannabis as they're eating their scone from the high market, the high desert market.
Hey, Joe, unmute yourself.
I can tell you, too, I moved from Colorado and I go back often to see family and it's, it's certainly not allowed to be smoked in public and it is smoked in public everywhere. So I have, I'm all in favor of it being legalized for recreational use, but I think when it comes to, you know, establishing the zoning rules and just keeping it in its place for right now, I'm for that.
Are we ready to make a motion then? Somebody did make a motion that we approve Article 10B, recreational marijuana establishments and testing facilities as presented to us? Did someone make that motion?
I think I made that motion.
Hey, Mike made that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who was that? Michael?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to do a roll call then. On Bayless, Boss?
Yes.
Doug? Yes? Douglas Dunn? Yes? Sandy Housman?
Yes.
Nancy Perana?
Yes.
Jennifer Ginger Ryan?
Yes.
Michael Smitzer?
Yes.
And Mike Hablin?
Yes.
Okay. The pass unanimously. Currently, I had some questions, if the attorney was here, in terms of the, well, just how, how that ordinance is written, but he's not here, so we made that motion. We'll let, we'll let the city council carry it further. Thank you. Okay, agenda item three, discussion regarding auxiliary dwelling units. And this was something that came up at a previous meeting that we wanted to address in terms of discussion. Joe, do you want to fill us in here?
Yes, there's, I presented the question to the city attorney regarding whether there was a law that was prohibiting regulations of ADUs. And then see where, in your, on your agenda where the city attorney said that we have broad authority, or you have broad authority, and the city has broad authority to regulate zoning matters and that they may, the city can make appropriate regulations and zoning requirements for ADUs, that we're not handcuffed by any regulation on that.
Great.
So it'll be whatever, whatever you guys feel is appropriate, and passes with the city council, of course.
Are there any comments here for, I guess there's two aspects of auxiliary dwelling in my mind. One is, is opportunities for Airbnb, those type of establishments, and also an opportunity for lower income housing for residents.
And you know, Doug, that might be something that you guys, you guys want to use as a, a regulation that perhaps to limit the Airbnb uses of ADUs.
So if I could just add, this, this topic was brought about before I became a member of the board, so I'm not up to date with this, so I don't know what the proper terminology is, but I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to have a say in this at this time. So I would like to have an opportunity to review a little bit more in depth if that would be helpful or, or not, it's up to you guys as, as the commission, but I'm not familiar enough with this to, to comment properly.
At this point, it's strictly, it's strictly for discussion. I mean, if we wanted to move forward further on this, then make recommendations to Joe and he brings something back to us for further discussion.
Okay.
But just so I'm on board with this, we currently don't have any ADU regulations per se.
You're on...
They're currently not allowed.
Okay, okay.
They're not allowed? Auxiliary dwellings?
There's, there's a lot of them that are, that are grandfathered, you know, pre-existing, non-conforming, but they're, if somebody wants to build one, they're not allowed because, because for a dwelling, for it to be a complete dwelling with, with cooking facilities and such like we had talked about, that that would, that would not be allowed unless we were, unless you were to come up with a way to, to make that a permitted use for resident, secondary use for residential lots, parcels.
So if I could, I know in, in Oral Valley, the, the mayor and council stipulated that it requires the homeowners, if they wanted to put in an adaptive dwelling unit, they have to sign a certain agreement that specifies that they will not use that ADU unit for rental purposes or Airbnb. And there are penalties that follow suit if in fact they're found to, to have violated that. So I don't know if in this case, something like that would be appropriate, but it is used in certain municipalities. Because that is the fear, that an ADU unit will be the guise only to be used then as an Airbnb and as rental income.
Mike, what we do allow is accessory living quarters, which is to say that it's accessory to the primary dwellings. So it wouldn't be standalone, but what we were looking at was perhaps allowing the accessory dwelling units as, as rentals for people, but we were thinking in terms of, of increasing the amount of, the amount of rentals, which would lower the value, lower the cost, and there also would be smaller units that would, that on lower income people would be able to fit into, where the people who provide services up in Old Bisbee could perhaps be able to live in Old Bisbee.
But those ADU, those ADU units you make reference would still have to have the same code compliant health and safety issues, et cetera, et cetera, in order to be used as a rental. Okay. That's where it gets a little squirrely.
ADUs would certainly contribute to the, the number of rentals that were available and affordable rentals, but how do you, how do you regulate long-term rental versus the short-term vacation rentals?
That would be something that, that we could, because this is going to be a long time that we're going to be looking at these, Sandy. So that could be something that we could work on in the verbiage that would be used to, so that it would only be long-term if that was what your conclusions were, that that was what we wanted.
Joe, you used the terms accessory living quarters. That's different than an ADU?
Yes. There, in order to be a dwelling, that by code, it has to have a place to sleep, a place to, a place to take care of your sanitary needs and a place to, to rest and a place to recreate. So there's, those are the, so what, what primarily happens is that you cannot have cooking facilities, you cannot have a range, you could have a microwave even, it's like a dormitory in how the regulations are for those. in how the regulations are for those.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Doug, you should do a standalone unit.
That would qualify to be a standalone.
If it had cooking facilities, yes. Without cooking, it would not be. It would be accessory.
Yeah, accessory living quarters. Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments or recommendations?
Where do we go from here?
I think I think we should we should be I'll try to find some more examples of Boilerplate or, you know, other municipalities, what they're using. I think it'd be interesting to wait for Tucson to to commit because they're in the middle of adopting the ADU regulations. And see what see what they come up with. We got we got the examples, you know, Portland, Seattle, kind of places where it's pretty common. But and California is moving that direction really strongly, too. But I will try looking those up and sending some of them or sending sending them to you guys to look over, and we can cut and paste, as it were, cherry pick and see what what you guys think are important to be included and adapted to Bisbee's conditions. If that sounds good to you.
Yes.
That's consensus? Yes.
I had a sideline question. It appears that the city attorney has said that we do have the ability to regulate Airbnbs. We've been talking about ADUs attached to a primary residence. But there are a number of Airbnbs that are, you know, primary residents to the property. Am I understanding this correctly? We could regulate Airbnbs in the city of Bisbee?
I think we're I think we're more handcuffed when it comes to Airbnbs than we are having to do with the ADUs is my understanding of those issues.
Part of the affordability problem, especially in Old Bisbee, is the fact that a lot of the rental units have become Airbnb. It's more lucrative to rent it two weekends a month than it is to rent it for a long term rental. And that's the reason why we're having problems with with available rentals in Old Bisbee.
Yeah.
Okay, then, Joe, I guess if you're gonna bring us some more things to consider in terms of what Tucson and other communities are doing?
Yep.
We'll discuss further when you have more information for us.
Yes.
We'll move on to the commission comments and we'll get we does anyone have any comments at this point? We refrain from any discussions. So just comments in terms of future agenda items or other comments. Does anyone have anything more to share?
I'll just throw my two cents. I'm just appreciative of the opportunity to participate. I think it was Joe Ward that encouraged me to throw my hat in the ring here. So I don't know. I think, Michael, you and I have met a couple of times. I'm the gentleman that purchased the American Legion building. For those of you who haven't met me, we're contemplating or planning on putting a brewery on the ground floor and a restaurant, and then I'm going to be living upstairs. So I would welcome all of you guys, be happy to stop by and introduce myself, share with you what I plan on doing. Very excited about once COVID is passed, what the potential is for Bisbee. I feel that there's a tremendous opportunity for Bisbee to grow, but grow in a way so it doesn't lose its character and all the things that have made a great funky, cool place to come and visit. And that's one of the reasons why I want to be a part of the plan and zoning so that Bisbee doesn't turn into a Sedona, doesn't become a Telluride, doesn't lose a lot of the character. But at the same time, you know, there are some struggles that a small town like Bisbee faces. And I'm hopeful that with some positive growth and some controlled growth, we can help a lot of the issues that we've touched on today. So for those of you who want to stop by, I'm there usually every Saturday and Sunday. And looking forward to, you know, being a part of Bisbee and making this a cool place. So thank you all.
Does anyone want to follow Mike's example and introduce themselves and make any comments of that regard like as he did?
I appreciate Mike offering his facility as a future meeting place.
Is that John?
Yes. Yes, this is John. I appreciate Mike offering his facility as a future meeting room.
Oh, yes. Absolutely. My my pleasure.
Any other further comments?
Well, I'll introduce myself. You know, I've been in Bisbee full time for almost 10 years now. And I feel the same way. I'm planning and zoning because I'm interested in what's going on. And I want to preserve what we have as far as as far as our communities go and our downtown. And I do a lot of volunteering in town, volunteering for the San Pedro, the Mining Museum, and things like that. And that's it.
Any other way of introducing yourselves?
I'll jump in. This is Michael. I, like Mike, am a contractor. I'm also part owner of the Bisbee Brownstone that is on the Gulch across the street from the old Stock Exchange. And I'm very interested in the development of the entertainment district and bringing revenue to the city and the people and supporting the individuals that live here and providing work for them. And I think we're starting to see a turn in COVID. I saw it this past weekend. And I think we're going to make a full recovery here very soon.
Other introductions?
I'm Ginger Ryan, and for 27 years, I lived in Old Bisbee. And I operated a takeout restaurant with a special use permit and then Airbnb and ran into zoning difficulties with a neighbor who also operated their business. And anyway, I ended up leaving because the conflict was not going to resolve. And I'm planning and zoning because I think if you don't try to make a difference and address the problem, you are part of the problem. So my participation is to try to be a good citizen, find solutions.
Any further introductions?
All right, I'll go last.
I'm last. I'm last, Nancy. Go ahead.
Okay, okay, Doug. I'm Nancy Pirana. I am a Realtor. I've been a Realtor here for about six years, but before that, I owned a a couple of restaurants in town. And like all of you, I pretty much feel the same exact way. We if we have slow and measured and thoughtful growth, we will definitely not turn into a Sedona or a Prescott or other places that people flee from. And I've sold Prescott's coming here, Sedona's coming here. So they all hate it, too. Phoenix hates it. So everyone wants to come to Bisbee. So I think with slow, measured growth, I think that we can all make Bisbee a better place.
I'm Douglas Dunn, and I guess my association with Bisbee began in 1978 when I met my wife. We worked with the library district here in Bisbee. We purchased a home in 1994. I am associated with the shop Acacia Art and Antique, 69 Main Street, where I've been for 23 years. I served on the city council for six years and retired two years ago. Had previously served on the Planning and Zoning Commission and elected to come back because I think this is one of the most interesting and commissions that the city has to serve on and most important. So I really appreciate appreciate all of you being a part of this. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Okay, guys. Have a good evening. Thank you. Bye bye. Thanks, Joe. Mike, thank you. Bye bye.